Okay. All righty, there we go. We're going to take our little time here. It is 7:00 PM and the August 13th, 2024 session of the regular session of the City Council is being called to order. I don't have a gavel. Don't, don't. Sorry. No, it's okay. Anyway, we are being called to order. Could we have the roll call, please?
Morgan, I got it. Councillor Brandow?
Here.
Councillor Thompson-Ryser?
Present.
Councillor Erickson?
Here. Here.
Thank you. Councillor Hill?
Here.
Councillor Ward-Mullen?
Here.
Councillor Skipper?
Here.
Mayor Watkins? Here. Speaker checked, good. All present in the council floor. Thank you.
Okay, could you please join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay, thank you. Ceremonies, appointments, and announcements. We actually have two of those today. Let's see, go ahead with that. The first one is Planning Commission. We have Brian Raich, who is, has submitted an application for the Planning Commissioner appointment. And so I need a vote on that or a discussion?
I move to approve Brian Raich for appointment to the Planning Commission.
Second.
See, can we do this all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, that motion carries. The second group of appointments we've got is for the Transportation Plan Update Advisory Committee. We have, let's see, can we do these all at once or do we want to do them separately?
In your packet is six applications. They're, the Project Advisory Committee is recommended between 10 and 12 committee representatives. And as you can see in your packet, we have at least four technical representatives. So six community representatives would bring us up to 10 and also allowing for future technical or other representatives either from the community or from the county or the state who might bring valuable input to the transportation system plan. And there's also the ability, if council would like, to appoint one or two members to the committee.
Okay.
And Linda and I.
Yes, I, yeah, I do have yours. Yeah.
Oh, was that already included in your number?
No, but I have a copy of it.
I just wanted to point out that I submitted my application, but I missed the deadline, so sorry.
Okay. So do we want to do these individually then or do we want to just for the Citizen Advisory Committee is on this? Or everybody's looked through them? Do you want to just do?
I'm ready to make a motion unless anybody has any questions.
No? Anybody? Any questions or comments on the Advisory Committee? Okay.
I move that the City Council approve the following applicants to the Transportation Plan Advisory Committee: Todd Dupee, Heather Miller, Tony Rydner, Marty Sherman, Randy Stapleus, and Ken Wright, and also Councillor Ward-Mullen.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous? Thank you. All righty. Citizen comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the City Council on any items off or on the agenda when invited by the mayor. Members of the public shall come forward, state their name and street address, and direct all comments to the mayor. Comments are typically limited to three minutes unless additional time is allowed by the mayor. And we start with item A, which is any items that are not on the current agenda. Do we have anybody who would like to make a comment? Okay, thank you. Then we move to item B, which is comments about any items that are on the agenda. Do we have any? Okay. Then we will move along to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have a question on the consent agenda.
Yes.
So I, I like looking through the checks and where we are paying, the city is paying. And I just noticed Premises. I don't know if that's how you say their company name. I believe that's our IT company. We have a, we paid them $12,000 and on 6/27, we also paid them on 7/11, $26,000. I just wanted to check if that's due to the move or is it something we usually pay them?
I can speak to that, Councillor Brandow. That sounds loud. That is for the purchase of the new server. It's, oh gosh, the names escape. Oh, Sonic Walls that they're installing and dark fiber cable they're installing from the vehicle building over to the building. So it's equipment purchase also along with their normal IT. It's twofold.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We did have a correction to the minutes from the June 25 meeting. I don't know if the changed minutes were printed and provided.
City Council's regular session in June 25th, 2024 special meeting.
They were not provided. Just one name was omitted from the staff present and we, they were not here, but they were added to the list. But we don't have in front of you, we just did it a few minutes ago.
Okay. So what are the implications of that?
We just need to amend those minutes. So we approve the consent agenda as amended when we have a motion for it to remove Morgan.
Okay, going once.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Moving on, item eight, ordinances, resolutions, discussion, and action items. Item A, resolution number 2024-360, fiscal year budget adjustments.
Yes, Mayor, I'll speak to that. Am I sound echoey to you guys? Because it's feeding back to me, how does it sound to you? So I need to adjust and turn down? No, you're all good? Okay. Normally, this, this resolution is a housekeeping resolution that we bring before you at the end of the year. And with the cancellation of the July meeting, it's pushed to the August meeting. This one in particular is in regards to our personnel. It's got no fiscal impact. It was just a contingency appropriation move. And it's mostly attributed to the change in PERS rates. It was the biggest swing was in the retirement accounts. Those PERS rates will be valid now for two years. And they should be releasing a new schedule next year. So this is a housekeeping item that we just show that change in appropriation.
Are there any comments, questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I move that the council approve and authorize the mayor to sign resolution number 2024-360, authorizing budget adjustments for fiscal year 2023-24.
Is there a second?
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. Excuse me, sorry about that. Item B, League of Oregon Cities Legislative Priorities. I have a feeling that goes to Shannon.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, the League of Oregon Cities has requested that each city submit its top five issues that they'd like the LOC to focus on during the 25, 26 legislative cycle. We've included the information directly from the LOC about the write-up of their priorities in your packet. I did go through the council goal list for this year and was able to mark some items as complete. That is in your packet as well. Based upon the things that we have faced over the last year as well as council goals, to get the discussion started, I suggested some potential priority submissions to the LOC. And those are in your cover memo of infrastructure funding, restoration of recreational immunity, lodging tax flexibility, 2025 transportation package, and operator and training apprenticeships. I also gave some alternative considerations that I thought also matched some of our discussions this year. And so those were just suggestions just to get the discussion started. And at the end, all I'll need is a consensus on up to five items to submit to the LOC. Their deadline is September 27th, so I will need something tonight.
Is there any discussion or questions?
When we are looking at those, should we be looking as a state with that type of issues? Or are we just looking internally what other issues are and voting on those? Like, I don't know if you understand my question, I guess. We are voting on priorities, right? So we, like, should we just be looking like ourselves? Like, we have these issues, let's put that to them? Or should we be looking at, let's vote on this and have those as priority? Because we know it's happening in the whole state as an issue. Like, for instance, homelessness. Like, we don't have a lot of homeless here, but is that an issue for the whole state? Like, should we be putting that as a priority?
That is something for the council to discuss. The LOC has just asked for input from every city. So how you approach it or if you approach it with a mix, that is up for the council decision. And I was reminded when I muted myself that we're not in September, so we could discuss this at the September meeting as well. So I apologize for jumping ahead and saying that we need a decision tonight.
So. Acknowledged by Mayor. I just wanted to add something just to add on to what Jeremy was saying with respect to homelessness. And I don't know that, you know, this is not, you know, a significant priority for Carlton because yes, we do not have, you know, an issue at this point with homelessness here. However, from a statewide perspective, I would like to see, you know, the legislators go back and look at the statute that they just enacted this last year with respect to camping, resting. Because since then, the Supreme Court has come out with a ruling that basically goes against that. And the state of California, or the governor in California has stated that he's, he's making it a priority to shut down all the camps in California. And I'm concerned about what is going to happen with those, I think, 200,000 homeless people in the state of California and whether that could potentially become a problem in Oregon. But it's not a Carlton issue, but it is an issue. So I don't know if this is the proper time to bring that up.
Any thoughts? Yes, Councillor Hill?
I have a thought in a different direction. I would like to see more help with infrastructure projects. Mainly the main street that we have here and sewer and water are my biggest concerns inside of town. That's all I have for that.
Okay. Do you have any questions on that comment? Okay. Just checking? Yes.
Yeah, I think that, I initially had no issue with the, the top five, you know, with some of the alternate considerations that are brought up. I think those are important as well. I did have, on page 16, the Community Safety and Neighborhood Livability. Was reading that. And that feels, I mean, it feels like it ties in with infrastructure. But, I mean, that's, that's kind of a topic we're dealing with right now. You know, with ODOT and safe routes to schools and things like that. You know, it says, it's, LLC supports a strong focus on funding safety improvements on large roads such as highways and arterials that run through communities. Like, it's exactly what we have. So I didn't know if that's, it seems like they're breaking these all down. I don't know if that fits into that blanket, "infrastructure", or if that's its own separate focus point.
That one I did look at and I didn't put it on the list. It's worthy of discussion. Great Streets is a very specific program. And you can see the write-up actually focuses on fatalities. And that is one thing we don't have in the city of Carlton, for better or for worse. For better because we're not losing citizens to fatalities, but for worse because we don't initially qualify for this program.
Okay. Any other comments? So what do you want to do? Do you want to go ahead and approve what we've got here?
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with it. I don't know if this is the avenue that we discussed with Councillor Brandow and Councillor Ward-Mullen were talking about, since it necessarily wasn't on the, the list or... I definitely think that the, you know, the top one and two are very important, both for our community and the state with infrastructure and recreational immunity. And then number four also, or number, yeah, number four, the transportation package. Yeah, so I don't...
I would maybe switch three and five to something else. I don't know if that's necessarily a priority. I don't know how much necessarily we bring on lodging tax and how much that really changes for us, but...
How important is lodging tax flexibility to us?
So budgetarily, by state law, lodging tax allows for 30% of tax collected to go into the general fund. 70% must be spent on tourism or tourism-related facilities, which is very specifically defined in state law. And so one of the emphasis that you see in the write-up from the LOC is to allow for cities to have more flexibility to put those funds towards things that tourists use, like parks, streets, water, sewer improvements. Because they are utilizing those resources, but not necessarily paying the property tax or the user fees for those systems. And so that is something that's been on the table for a number of years of how to get a little bit more flexibility and how those funds are able to be utilized. I put it on our list because there has been a discussion during our budget process about how can we balance things out a little bit more to be able to spend more money on streets and sidewalks? And so that is the reason I put it on this process. That's also why I put under alternative considerations different uses for marijuana and alcohol tax, particularly responding to comments made during the budgetary process.
Any other comments, questions? All righty. So...
I have a question. Can you explain number five, the operator in training apprenticeships, pertinent to the Carlton needs?
Absolut, absolutely. So statewide, cities are having difficulty in finding qualified water and wastewater operators. It is not as easy as taking a college course. It's a combination of time on a specific system. So class one, class two, class three, four, whatever. And then it is also coursework and testing. And there are levels within. So you can get a certification, then you have to get to the next level and it builds upon that. And for that reason, we are finding ourselves as a state having difficulty locating qualified water and wastewater operators throughout the state of Oregon. Therefore, it became such an issue that cities have raised it over and over again that it would be nice to be able to have some state funding or some state emphasis on encouraging apprenticeships and other alternative ways to become certified in these systems to be able to fill this need of operators that can manage systems. And in our case, we are working on cross-training our staff. But we do have a director who may be nearing a time in which he wishes to pursue other endeavors, like travel. And we do have an Assistant Public Works Director who's working on their certifications. But let's say we have an illness that goes through or they find another opportunity or if they have to move to take care of family or we're not in the situation immediately, but could we find ourselves in the situation like any other city? Absolutely.
Yeah, the other thing that I think is super important that I would like to see added to the list is on page nine, the addressing energy affordability challenging from rising utility costs. I think that's front and center with us right now with the proposed PG rate hikes. You know, it's 46% over the last three years. So I know there's been a lot of work at the state level. I would like to see that continue. And I think that's of utmost concern to us, our citizens, and us as a state in general. So I would like to personally, in my opinion, add that to the top five because it's getting crazy.
Thank you. Any other comments, observations, ideas?
I would, I would agree with that too. I would, I don't know if that's too broad, but I think communication is really important. Like, without communication, can't really do much. But I would put resilient, future-proof broadband, infrastructure, and planning investment as a priority. I know it's a little, like, it's a little different, but I know the, without it, it's, it's really hard to do anything else. I'd like to see that, but I, yeah. That's all I have.
Okay. Councillor? Oh, okay. You look like you were thinking about something there. Okay. Anyone else? All righty, so where do we go from here?
I think I've heard consensus on one, two, and four, which are infrastructure funding, restoration of recreational immunity, and the 2025 transportation package. I've also heard discussion about emphasizing work on the homelessness issue. And then just now, we've had a, a couple of councillors talk about the utility affordability. So I think we have consensus on at least three items with potential consensus on two additions to the list.
If I could just bring up the, the
Sure.
the issue that I brought up about the homeless situation or, you know, this current statute in state of Oregon. As far as this is concerned, these priorities for the lock, this may not be the appropriate form for that, but I think certainly this matter can be brought up with our individual representatives of the state regarding the homeless issue without it being part of a lock and agenda item. So just putting that, that out there.
Yeah, I think it's also with Shannon's explanation on the lodging tax flexibility. I think that falls hand in hand with a lot of the other ones we're discussing, you know? So I don't, I don't, initially I was wondering, same thing as Councillor Brandow, what is that? But with your explanation, I see how important that is. So my personal, again, I think the top four and adding the utility and broadband would be my, my approach to the five that we send to the LOC.
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah, I have a feeling that the homelessness will be covered by other cities in Oregon that are experiencing it more than Carlton, so...
Well, right, I mean, I, exactly. I mean, I realized when I brought it up, it really is not an issue per se for the city of Carlton and our, you know, what we would like to see done. But I would like to see the issue raised at some point with our individual representatives. You know? That perhaps in the future, we coordinate with other cities. Can, so we're talking about one, two, three? The first three, what's the? Or the next two?
With the most recent discussion, I've heard potential consensus for number one, infrastructure funding. Number two, restoration of recreational immunity. Number three, lodging tax flexibility. Number four, 2025 transportation package. With discussion of adding the utility affordability as number five.
Yeah, I think that's important, that what Kevin brought up. I would agree to that.
Okay. Do we need to vote on this?
I just need a consensus.
Okay. Good. Thank you, folks. Oh, goodie. Number C, the dog leash survey.
Thank you, Mayor. If you'll just give me a second to get to my packet.
Yes.
Apologize. Okay, this was discussed at an earlier council meeting, if you remember. There was a request to gather more information about community input for the City Council regarding thoughts of the community regarding a need for additional leash requirements or changes to Carlton required, current code requirements for leashes in the community. Current code requirements for leashes in the community. We did develop a seven-question survey uh, that also provided the ability to write in. We did provide this survey at the dump days event, we also did it through community updates next door, the post office. Both parks and also at the front desk for people to partake in the survey. And the results, you have an exhibit one. Um, what we had was forty-eight responses. And uh, we had twenty-five percent of those say that Carlton's leash laws are great. Forty-seven point nine percent say they were just right, and twenty-seven point one say they are in need of improvement. Uh, how can Carlton promote responsible dog ownership within our community? Uh, the two largest uh, ones were install a dog park at sixteen point seven percent. And create from a leash laws at fourteen point six percent, which may seem contradictory to the above results. And then, uh, are there any issues that concern you regarding a dog park? Safety for people and dogs was at thirty-one point three. Cleanliness at twenty-five, maintenance at thirty-one point three, and potential spread of disease at twelve point five. Um, which maintenance and spread of disease can sometimes go hand in hand in dog parks. Um, and then it says, do you support a registration and dog maintenance fee? If so, what annual amount are you comfortable paying? And overwhelmingly at seventy-seven percent, it was none. Um, and then do you think that Carlton could benefit from a dog park and fifty-eight percent was no? Uh, so. I also included previous memos uh, with information about the survey, uh, the flyer that was issued. Uh, the questions and also the information that was requested for statistics. About calls related to uh, dog issues with throughout the entire city of Carlton. So at this point, um, given also the review of your council goal memo. Uh, we would request some feedback and discussion amongst council of what would you like staff to do? From this point forward in regards to this item. Uh, if anything. And if we are to take it on, what might we look at as far as council goals? Moving, shifting on the current goal list.
Any comments, discussion? Yes, Counselor Ward Mullen.
Well, just, I, I want to get to the, to the um, statistics, when I was looking at them. It, it seemed like most of them were, you know, dogs on the loose or, you know, lost dogs. There was, I was surprised actually relatively few dog bides considering, you know, the number, uh, you know. The, the amount of statistics, so it didn't seem that many of these reports had anything to do with our, you know. Leash law, I mean, because dogs are on the loose or dogs that literally get out, I mean, they don't even have their owner around. So I don't know that a leash law or uh, dog park is going to change any of those statistics. I, you know, I know Mayor, you and maybe you, Carolyn too, being, you know. Dealing with your, your dog a lot that there's, you know, issues, I, I know some about it, but not a lot about issues with dog parts. Dog parks and aggressiveness of dogs having a dog park. It's the expense of building a dog park and maintaining it, and apparently no one wants to pay for it.
I think some of the issues that we have a dog park, an official dog park. And it seems like people don't want a dog park or want to pay for it. But we might have the issues of having an official dog park. So that's, I guess that's my issue with the, is the, we do have a dog park. Not an official one, but we do have one. So, we, I guess we can either not have a dog park or have a dog park. I think having an unofficial something is not a good idea in general, but. It's my true sense.
I think in this situation, um, personally, what I've seen is that the. Uh, dog owners that are down there pretty much self-monitor. What is going on, um, and if there are issues, they seem to. Take care of them pretty thoroughly on their own. That's at least been my experience with what, with the situation as it stands today.
I think that the uh, survey was worthwhile doing, and we should obviously keep the results in our files. We have our police department always involved in things, so we can uh, continue to monitor this. But not um, do anything that's going to. Change, you know, drastically, especially money-wise. So I would say not pursue this at this time.
While I, I, I agree with the comments made, um, I have seen firsthand. The disregard for taking care of your pet, and you know, I volunteer down at the fields. Quite a bit during the spring and summer, and um. There is a number of dog walkers, while I find it enjoyable, but I, I don't know how you put more of an emphasis on. Cleaning up after your pet, because we've got ten thirteen-year-olds out there in the outfield with lots of you-know-what. And when a person is walking their dog and they're off-leash a hundred yards away. That's going to be impossible to clean up after your pet, let's just be real, so. I, that, that is a, I could see as a topic of frustration, I don't know if it's more education what it is. I do en- enjoy seeing dogs out there and enjoying themselves and people recreating for sure, but that's more of a personal. Issue I have with it, because I do see a lot of dogs just running through the park with nobody within fifty feet of them, so.
And there are some options, I think with. Maybe raising awareness a little bit more, we've, we've been. We have the. The bags available and some stuff, but what we could do is maybe look at putting a little bit more. Responsibility onto the, onto the dog owners, I keep thinking in terms of. Maybe working with some of the ones who are a little more aware and a little more um, conscientious. Using, using their goodwill to push a little harder onto some of the folks that are. A little less um, aware, and definitely around the uh, ballparks, I mean, that's, yeah, that's. Well, definitely around the ballparks, around the park period, it's not acceptable, it just is not. And uh. That's a, something that I think can be dealt with, but um. I don't think we need to be using city resources necessarily to be doing it. City resources in the sense of asking staff to be out there having to monitor that.
And I think if we're going to get into the actual dog park business, Newburgh has a um. Pretty heavy-duty dog park at uh, Oo- Ouing Young Park, twelve oh one South Blaine Street. I urge council members to go over there and take a look, it's heavy-duty fencing, a lot of maintenance. And it would totally change what Winnebago looks like.
Yeah.
I'll just say, and I think uh, some type of education and outreach um. Might be worthwhile here in the city of Carlton, and I'll just give you an example. Um, when my husband and I lived for over twenty years in San Francisco. Over eight hundred thousand people for a number of years, it was a terrible problem with dogs um, defecating all over the. City, you couldn't walk five feet in the sidewalk without having to walk around, something was just terrible everywhere. And the city, I don't know what the details were of the education outreach, but there was an outreach done. It was absolutely amazing, the change that took place in San Francisco with that, it really made a difference. I think it would also be worthwhile as part of that to um, do some outreach and education about. Um, how to secure your home so that you don't have dogs on the loose? Because if you look at this report, it's the lion's share of these are dogs on the loose and dogs that are barking, you know, I mean, there's. You know, behavioral issues connected with that, I'm not just sort of some basic education of, of if you're going to have. An animal, you know, how to, you know, work with that animal so that you do not have those behavioral issues. That's kind of not what we're dealing with now, but um. But I think as far as um, cleaning up and that type of thing, outreach works.
Yeah, um. There's a couple of ways to do that, but yeah, I, I. Were you going to say something? Yes, go.
No one interrupt you, Mayor.
No, go.
I've heard a lot, um, not wanting to spend a lot of city resources, necessarily shifting from the prioritization of current council goals. But seeing the value of some educational effort. Counselor Ward Mullen, you mentioned something specific to San Francisco. Um, I also am aware of an educational program, I was looking at council goals. And one of them is to provide leadership development and other volunteer opportunities for community members, including youth. I, this is just a brainstorm, so it may be a really bad idea when it comes verbally out. Uh, but I don't know if Counselor Ward Mullen would be willing to look at the city of San Francisco and get some resources. Of their educational campaign and what they found to be successful. And Counselor Brandejo, since this is a, a passion for you, I don't know if you'd be interested in researching. I'm familiar with it from Burnalee County that come, that the city of Albuquerque is part of. Um, but it was actually created from the Greenville County Soil and Water Conservation District in South Carolina. And it's, it's called the poopferry.info, and it is a, a campaign. Um, and has continued to achieve national recognition, and so I don't know if you'd be willing to look into that. And see what the components are of that, maybe contact Greenville and maybe Burnalee County. And see what, again, what they found successful, and maybe together you could bring forth what you find. With maybe the idea of providing some sort of community engagement opportunity, um, maybe engaging the school. Um, and helping participate in this outreach, it would meet a council goal. Plus what I'm hearing of wanting more education around this matter, it's just, just a brainstorm.
I can do that, I'll look into it, San Francisco.
I, just my personal opinion, and that's just what I think, but. Um, I guess my issue is not necessarily with the, with the poop and, wh- which it is an issue, it's a sanitary issue, but. Um, we do have a river there that runs, um, that could become an issue, um. My, my biggest issue is the leash where we have a park where we allow people to unleash their dogs and. Um, if we are okay with that, I guess we can put signs and say, you're, you're allowed to have your dog unleashed, and that's fine in this park. Or if you're not okay with that, we need to put signs and say we're not okay with that, I think just being in this middle ground, we're like. Oh, it's fine to come here, unleash your dog and do whatever, I, I don't want to be in this position, I. Personally, sometimes I don't want, I, I don't want to be, and I don't know that some issue could happen in the future and the city could have, could have. Problems with that, I don't know, but um, what I don't want is just have an unofficial dog park and have it. Having something that's not clear with the, with the park, I think that's, that's my, my biggest issue with the park. I've, personally, I wouldn't have a dog park, I wouldn't allow that, and, but. I think we need to choose a way and not just like allow it to be in those murky waters where we currently are. But that's, it's my, my personal view, but. Just personally, I, I sometimes I don't take my kids there because I don't want to have dogs that just run after them, or. I don't want to take my small dog there because I have dogs that come to them, or bigger dogs that could bite, bite my dog, so. I think, and I'm, I'm not the only one that has the issue, I know different people that have the same issue with that park. And I know, now why don't you take their dog there, because you might have dogs that are super far away from you that, like. Sure, you can call the dog, but if a fight starts, you're not going to be able to get your dog. And most of those people might, I would be able to get to the dog in a, at fast enough speed to, to stop whatever happens, I think. I think like maybe we are lucky that nothing has happened yet in Carlton, but I'm sure someday something will happen. So. That's, yeah.
So why is it that the upper park has a leash? Ordinance on the lower park does, from what I've read in the city stuff.
I would have to look into the history of when the ordinance was passed, I don't have that information right now.
And then as Kevin has said about the kids playing ball, it does say on the sign down there. For the dog owners to keep their dogs off the ball fields, so obviously that's not being enforced. By whoever. Mainly the dog owners aren't doing as what it says, and then the kids are having to put up with the mess.
I think that would come under some of the stuff that Shirley was talking about, looking at um, with the uh. With the park in San Francisco, because we really haven't put a lot of effort into. Um, educating and reminding folks, um, it's pretty free, free-flowing down there right now. And I think if we went through the process that Shirley was talking about and looked at some of the. What some of the other cities have done in that situation, uh, we might find that there are some. Resolutions to that that we maybe haven't thought of.
And it's not just folks that have their, their dogs down at the park, in terms of the outreach and the education. It's also educating in terms of uh, taking your dogs out anywhere in the city. And you know, if you take them out to do their business, to, to have, be prepared to um, you know, to clean that up. Because I, I have seen many times people, oh, okay, and they just leave it, so.
I will say I've cleaned up plenty of, after plenty of dogs on the sidewalks all around town, it's not. Specific to the lower park. Yeah, that other people's, yeah.
But separate from that part, but, but going back to what you were talking about, um, Girmay about leashing. Um, just for whatever it's worth, um, also in San Francisco, there was an effort uh, really to um, enforce leash laws. And you know, because we, there, there's a huge park, Fort Funston, which is near the ocean, where literally on any given day in the weekend, especially, there could be. Two hundred dogs there, it's a very, very large area, um, and they were trying to enforce leashing. And the folks that take their dogs there or other places in the city to run, they just revolted against it. And so, I mean, the ci- end of the city could, just could not enforce, you know, uh, leashing the dogs. I mean, and the owners just said, forget it, I don't care, we can do it, you know, they just went against it, and so in the end, they just gave up. So just for whatever it's worth, that's what happened. You know, they just went against it. And so in the end, they just gave up. So just for whatever it's worth, that's what happened there.
I I think I asked that before Tyler. Um, if I just wanna confirm for remember right, so if something would happen and someone gets attacked by a dog in the lower park, um, do they have any grounds on going after the city for not having signs or not being clear or anything against the city?
I I don't believe that we would have any liability exposure on that. Our park's ordinance does allow dogs to be off-leash at Winterburg Park except for on sports fields and in the play area. Um, and because our ordinance is public, I think that would be considered an assumed risk of anybody going down to to that park and participating.
Okay, so with that being said, you say in the play area, mom's down there where their five-year-old, a dog's running loose, comes by for some reason and nips and bites a kid, in the play area, no dogs are allowed off-leash. Would that not then be triggered back towards the city because it's not being enforced?
I I don't think so. I think they would have to show that some particular dog over and over again or with some regularity was not following that rule. Um, but I I don't expect that we would have any exposure. Doesn't mean we wouldn't be named in a suit because, you know, cities always gonna be named, but um, that's it it doesn't rise to a level of concern to me. And I am Mr. Tums. My stomach hurts about everything, so.
So if a if if a um, because I know of a situation here in Carlton where um, a dog did attack and bite a person and the police department became involved. It had nothing to do with city liability, but was the the dog owner and the and the dog owner here in Carlton ended up euthanizing your dog because of that incident.
Was there a question in there?
Well, I mean, my, I guess, I mean, not that this there's liability to the city, but if but if you're a dog owner and your your dog attacks someone and injures them, there is some liability to that dog owner. Am I correct on that? Because I know the Carleton Police Department was involved in that incident.
Yes, that that is where the primary liability would lie is with the dog owner.
Gonna say particularly if they were in the upper park or in the downtown area because they're required to be leashed there, so.
Do we have any signage down in the lower park saying that dog owners are responsible for the behavior of their dogs?
No.
We may wanna consider that if we ever update our signs down there.
I think we should at least have a sign down there that your your dog should be controlled by voice control or some form of control. They do have those in in um San Francisco.
Yeah, there's some things that could be done along that line. One of the ways I guess would be for uh, Councilor Ward Mullen has said that she would check on some stuff. I would be willing to help with that. Anyone else wanna get involved in this?
Yeah, I I can get involved, what is worked on. I mean.
You're the one that started this.
Yeah, but my objective is different, I guess. Um, yeah, I yeah, I I I like I I think we need to have signs, like if you're taking a risk of going to the lower park to get bitten by dogs that are off-leash, the minimum we can do is at least let people know that that's a risk they're taking by going to that park. Maybe you don't even know it's allowed to have off-leash dogs in that park. Maybe we need to have signs that 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 tell people that, because we are improving the park and putting kid toys there, they're sort of new. And like, I assume kids wanna go there, like I it sort of makes message there where we want kids there, but also want dogs running around what they want, so um, I would like to see some signs at the very least in the park.
You could do that. I I would also make the comment that a lot of the time down at the kids' toy, kids' kids' area, the playground, you see the kids running around with their dogs off-leash. In the in um, there are families that come down with small children and the dogs, and the dogs are down there. People kind of make those assumptions right now.
I'd like to point out that with uh the change with recreational immunity, we did do updated signage and it was one of the main points on the signage is that you use the parks at your own risk. So that is until we find different language, we've at least identified that through the recreational immunity process. Uh, Councilor Brandejo, per- perhaps part of the research is contacting other cities, maybe in Oregon, maybe throughout the nation, um, finding their challenges with enforcing leash laws. What have they found to be effective? Um, YAHATs included voice control in their ordinance. I wouldn't necessarily wanna just throw voice control on a sign if it's not in our ordinance. So that could be a future discussion, but then maybe something, if you're talking to other cities, whether that's code enforcement or police or whatever, that you may wanna ask what have they found to be the most effective? If anything.
Okay. So it sounds like we have an assignment, Councilor Ward Mullen.
Calling San Francisco, that's my assignment.
Okay, the three of us, I guess, are in the committee. Girmay? Okay. Uh, that, I think, is there anything else? Through the order? Oh, gosh, I was trying to forget that. Yes, the last item D, the proposed street tree revisions.
Thank you, mayor. You cannot forget five days of my work, I'm sorry.
I, five days of your life?
Your, these are your, these are the packets that we printed for you because it's much easier to review the combined exhibit in eleven by seventeen format than on your iPads.
Am I correct that this this exhibit here incorporates what you have also in here, that's the uh Planning Commission recommendations?
So the eleven by seventeen or exhibit one is the Planning Commission list, correct, that was approved and recommended. No additional line items were added from the Planning Commission list. I did add three columns in the white portion. There. One, two, three, four. You'll see the fifth column over said spread feet and in bold it says per PGE. That column I added from the PGE list that is in your documents. I also added canopy area per PGE. And I added those because there was sometimes a difference between what the Planning Commission listed versus PGE, so I wanted you to have total information that I had available. I also added the next column soil type, that again says soil type per PGE. The only other thing I added to this sheet, this combined document, is the two columns to the right that say comments PGE and comments ODF for Oregon Department of Forestry. I then utilized a lot of the color coding that you saw on the ODF commentary. But the color coding by row is red is that one of the agencies had a significant issue with the tree that red or pink uh is a significant issue with the tree. Yellow is they had cautionary concerns or I suppose we could call it golden rod, would that be more? Had a cautionary concern. And green is where all three agencies did agree that it was an appropriate street tree. However, there are some comments that are worthwhile of discussion as we even go through the the green rows. I did suggest a possible way to approach the discussion of this list. Um, first and foremost, I don't know that we will get through the entire list tonight. Um, I do want council to have ample time to have discussion of all of these items. I also wanted to point out that when I did receive the Department of Forestry's comments in May, they had just hired a for- former urban forester from the city of Corvallis, and she had just been through Carlton and was very willing to speak to council and the community to assist with our community forestry efforts. Um, so if, as we go through these sections and or lines, if you're looking for further input from the Department of Forestry or PGE or even the Planning Commission, um, if we have this discussion at multiple meetings, we have an opportunity to schedule those individuals either to provide additional comment or to be here to speak to council as you have this discussion. Um, as I was going through the list and trying to figure out a manageable way that to have the discussion, because this can be very overwhelming of ten pages on an eleven by seventeen sheet. Um, at the very, it's almost reverse order. At the very end of the document, the combined document, page ten, is a list of prohibited trees. Um, the agencies were all in agreement with the seven prohibited trees proposed by the Planning Commission and ODF had recommendations to add on a couple of trees to the prohibit. If council wanted to start there, since there was agreement, um, we could take that section. If there's agreement, we can then set that section aside and tackle another section. Um, the next one that I proposed would be um, the red color coded rows that there was significant. I then moved into green. And then lastly, I suggested yellow because that was the most cautionary and there was the most difference um, maybe of opinion between agencies. You will note as you go through here that there, not all the agencies agreed about the trees. You will know that there's varying perspectives. There, um, a lot of the PGE notes stop after the small tree list because that's what they focus on as appropriate street trees, because a lot of their focus is under power lines. So they're gonna be on the smaller side. Uh, you will probably have noticed if you review the original PGE list that they sent me for street trees that and you compare it to the recommendations from the Planning Commission, a lot of the PGE focuses on a general tree. So they will have one lilac, whereas you may have multiple lilac species on the Planning Commission recommendation. Um, and you will also see that there are comments from Oregon Department of Forestry if they were unfamiliar with some of the cultivars or varieties. So it is definitely a lot to comprehend. Um, that was just a suggested approach to the discussion. Of starting with prohibited trees and moving to red and then green and then yellow. And at whatever pace feels comfortable for the council.
Can I ask a question? Um, I'm okay with that process, um, but my initial question, if we're going that route, is um, the prohibited trees, are these trees that are on this list? Like, why, why do we have a list of prohibited trees if the only trees you can plant are on the approved list? Wouldn't prohibited trees span many species if you can only plant a tree, street tree, that's on the list? That's where I'm a little bit confused, because like the tree, e- even the, you know, the ODF recommending the the, I'm not gonna pronounce the name, Tree of Heaven and discouraging ash trees. Um, I I couldn't find the Tree of Heaven on this approved list, so I'm I'm confused on why we need a prohibited list if we're saying you can only plant something that's on the approved list.
If I recall, and Amy, help me if my understanding is that the Planning Commission was interested in making sure let me back up. You will notice that there's small trees, medium-sized trees and large trees. In fact, the the large tree, the first large tree is a redwood. I wouldn't necessarily think of that as a street tree, but it certainly could be planted in somebody's large backyard. Um, and so I believe the planning, from my understanding, the Planning Commission wanted to make sure there was a list of trees that were prohibited under any circumstances to protect the health and diversity of the tree, the urban forestry environment in Carlton. So, yes, if a tree's not on the recommended street tree list, but not on a prohibited list, it still could be planted somewhere.
But I guess my question, do we have a secondary list that me as a property owner looks to when I'm planting a tree in my backyard or front yard? Because that's what it sounds like. I I'm not planting it on the street, so the prohibited list does not doesn't count for me. You can't tell me what I can't plant in my back. I'm 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 just asking the question. That's where I'm a little bit confused. I I understand the concept of it, but that would be a whole different list in itself of approved trees in the entire city of Carlton.
Currently, there's no secondary list. I think the intent was to carve out I guess, in essence, the prohibited tree list would be the secondary list.
Essentially, and it was mainly geared for developers, so they are required to do the street trees, but they're also required to do landscaping requirements on the properties before they sell. So by having a prohibited list, you're not, you're also taking those trees out of the yards of the new developments. Now, you as the homeowner, after the lot is sold, you're right, we don't always have that option or control.
Thanks for that clarification.
So I was looking at this list, I mean, it's obviously, you know, I don't have, you know, training, scientific training on, you know, all of these, so it's it's a bit daunting, um, but I I would appreciate having the individual from the Department of Forestry come and speak to us. I think that would be useful. Um, secondly, um, as I'm looking at these, because there's a lot of um, trees that are already on, that are green, that, you know, substantial, it's just from that alone. Um, that I would think that all those that are in red, we should just kind of start out by taking them out of the discussion, since, you know, one Since, you know, one or more of the agencies already has suggested they're not a good tree to plant.
I, I wanna question that a little bit, though, because even on the first page, you know, it's, it's in red because PG removed it from their, their list, but ODF approved it. So it would be good to have the ODF representative here because, you know, even on the, the second and third red one, you know, there's conflicting information there. I mean, the Planning Commission's comments are tolerant of urban stretches, stresses. Or in the second one, good summer heat tolerance. And then PG says it gets scalded, sun scalded and drought stressed. So those two conflict. And ODF has no opinion and says that they're okay. So I feel like before blanketly just taking off all the red, there's lots of kind of conflict in the three entities. And I personally would feel, I know the Planning Commission did a lot of research into this and I feel like their input is, is holds quite a bit of weight and so does ODF's. I think from the utility perspective, PG is looking at strictly from that. They do have comments that they say it's, it's drought stressed, but they're not really concerned about that. They're concerned about their overhead power lines. So I feel like we put more substance and thought into what ODF is saying and what the Planning Commission is saying while minding what PG, but there, there is just a few, a handful of them that they contradict each other.
And that's why it would be good to have this individual come and speak to us. But, you know, just one distress, when I look at this list, I mean, from my perspective of saying yes to, you know, one or more of these, you know, I'm doing it from just laypersons, from reading the comments here, but, you know, I don't have any particular expertise on these trees.
Yeah, and further, even some of the green ones are PG doesn't think it's suitable for power lines. So I, I don't know if we can necessarily use the color. I would, I'm, I'm leaning towards, yes. Like, when you're looking at this huge Excel file, I guess you just sort things out, filter things. Using all the green would make a lot of sense, but I feel like the colors might not reflect necessarily. Where we're looking, I think maybe having different lists, like trees that are in the streets and close to power lines, we allow these trees. And trees that, like, since we're talking about this prohibited list, I guess having a list where like planting, planting on your backyard, whatever, that type of thing, it's allowed, would, would make sense to me. I imagine PG has some knowledge on what, what is good or not for, for their, for their lines. And even if it's PG, everyone hates PG, we need electricity and it's in, it's important to have electricity in, in a city. So I, yeah, I would, I would, I, I think PG, whatever they, they have it noted there, it's also sort of important for, for infrastructure in our city. I mean, it's a, we, we use electricity, we need electricity, so.
Yeah, I totally agree. I would, I, I probably framed that a little bit wrong, like, just meaning like some of the comments of the contradictory comments, not necessarily out, throwing out PG's comments. That's not the angle I was taking for sure. It's just a few of them there stuck out to me where it was kind of conflicting. What ODF was saying, what the Planning Commission was saying, what PG is saying.
Just as an example, to build off Counselor Ward Mullins, let's say you're at tackling or discussing the section of trees that are highlighted in pinkish red. Hey, let's just take the, the three on the first page. And let's say the rest of them, you say, yes, we agree, take them off the list. But these three, we would like more information from PGE if they could provide it about why they took it off their list. Or we would like more commentary from ODF about why they thought it was appropriate. So you could piece out those three as part of the discussion. But if you had agreement on the rest of them, we could put those to the side.
Are new developments, all the power pole, there, there, there are no power poles, correct? But so everything's undergrounded, is that true? Yeah, so some of this is sort of moot for, for new developments. As far as interference of power poles.
Interference for power poles, but as you see on those three, they mentioned concern about drought tolerance and sun scalded. And that actually has been a point that has been made about watering our trees, getting those trees cared for and making sure that they are successful. And if it's, let's just say the, the Trident Maple is an appropriate small tree list to go into the next development. But PG's noted it is easily drought stressed. Is that one that is with all the other discussions council has had that you want to encourage?
Sorry, I think you're right, Shannon. Like, it's only the, the first three that have the conflicts. It looks like the rest, if unless I'm missing something or missed something, the remainder of the red are kind of all consistent with what PG and ODF recommended. So for sake of narrowing it down, I'm okay with maybe requesting a little bit more information on the first three. But it feels like there was consent, the first three reds, but it feels like there was pretty consistency on the remaining of the red. Even from the Planning Commission, I noticed there was one that Commissioner Terrell recommended for removal. So I feel like those ones are kind of an easy way to dwindle it down by seven.
And if you're interested about additional way to group them in your memorandum, it does say red color rose and then it has the page number and the specific species, if that's helpful, as you go through this process.
So how are we doing this? Are we going three by three and say yes or no, or like what is the, every page?
How do people feel about the prohibited trees? I know Counselor Skipper, you were concerned about having any prohibited trees.
No, I'm not, now that it was explained by Amy, I'm fine with it, but I would also add the, the discouraging, basically I would remove ash trees, like, and the Tree of Heaven, like, ODF recommended to that list.
How do other counselors feel about that option of keeping these seven trees as prohibited and adding ODF's recommendations of Tree of Heaven and discouraging new ash tree plantings?
Well, aren't the prohibited trees, they're prohibiting, prohibiting them for street trees in between this.
This prohibited list is meant to be citywide.
Front yard, backyard, everywhere.
Correct.
I think it should be a different document.
Inside yard.
I think it should be like prohibited list everywhere document. Because I assume this is gonna be like street tree list, whatever you call.
So Counselor, we certainly can format it differently. I was just trying to keep the format as close as possible to the Planning Commission list. We can certainly carve out prohibited tree list and include it. I don't know if you were able to see, and we can cer- this needs improvement. But our current street tree documentation, we can certainly make that clear as this is prohibited throughout the city. And make it as, we can carve it out. We can certainly format. I was just trying to keep as close to the Planning Commission format as possible.
Okay, so the last two where they say they're invasive, yeah, those should probably be prohibited. Front yard, backyard, wherever, because it's an invasive tree. But the other ones, I think that, you know, like Kevin said, it's up to, at least from what I've hearing, what he said, you know, if you wanna put that in your backyard, falls on your house, that's your problem. If you put it in the, in the street, then it causes damage to the city property or somebody else's car, you're gonna, you know, be reliable part of it, but the city has more control over that.
And I, I think I read it correctly, the, the discouraging of ash trees is due to the Emerald Ash Bor, which is kind of a huge problem right now. Feel like we dealt with it in Lower Park, maybe, or something similar?
We have a number of ash trees in Lower Park, you're correct. And I have heard that we have a lovely oak issue coming along.
I feel like the Planning Commission went to a lot of work to do this, so like, I, I think we stick to the format as best as possible and don't exhaust resources trying to create different things or scenarios. I think it makes sense to me to, the prohibited trees was agreed on upon all groups. For me, it makes sense to, to keep that list.
With ODF's recommendations.
Are homeowners currently required to notify before they plant trees in their yard?
No comment. No, they can plant whatever they want.
So we have a prohibited list, so what good is a prohibited list if?
That, that's where, well, the new development, like Amy was saying, for developers that are required to do landscaping in new development. That's where we would have the primary ability to enforce that list.
Other thoughts, concerns about the prohibited list? I thought this would be the easy one.
My only thing is that I think that we should put all hawthorns on the prohibited list because they are a ugly nasty tree that has no place on this planet. That's just me.
It would be nice to get them out of the rail corridor.
Step one, outlaw them. Step one, outlaw them.
Are we generally okay with the prohibited tree list? Maybe expanding the hawthorns to all hawthorns? Yes?
Yes.
Can I put that section to the side for right now? And also, as you're going through this, remember, this is something that's adopted by resolution. So if you wanted to revisit it after you approve the resolution every month, you could do so. I wouldn't necessarily encourage it, but, because we have other goals, but it is something you could do.
I do have to ask a question. Is this list gonna be given out in its entirety with, hey, this tree over here doesn't do well because it gets sunburnt and is intolerant to drought? Because that would actually help people make decisions on what they're trying to plant in their yard or wherever.
Once council narrows down this list, we can certainly agree on the format that it is presented including which comments are included for the trees.
Folks probably need to know some reason why we're including or not including them, so, yeah, makes sense.
It is eight thirty. Do you wanna start talking about the trees that are highlighted in pinkish red? The rose rose.
You're bringing coffee?
No, I did not, and we can certainly pick this up at the September meeting.
I, I think we can, we can narrow, we've got ten trees to talk about, like, I, I feel for the sake of progress. My proposal was to maybe ask for a little bit more comment on the, the first three. And if there's consensus, I feel like all parties agree to removing the remaining seven that are in red.
I agree with that idea.
I agree too.
All right, who wants to go?
So is there consensus with that approach? Yes? Would you like more information from PGE and ODF on those trees, on those three?
Uh, I think just maybe clarification with ODF of, because they're the ones that are saying that it's on their list, but the PG's saying that it's not drought, it gets drought stressed, so I'd be curious why ODF differs in that opinion.
Have a maple in my front yard and that thing gets drought stressed and I have to water it a lot, so.
I didn't notice to me, is, is the cotton, whatever the, what is the name of that tree with the cotton? Is it the cotton wood?
Yeah.
Are those on the prohibitions? They're awful.
They are not on the prohibited list.
Well, they should be.
Are they on any list?
Not that I recall.
Yeah, I wouldn't think, cottonwoods are usually, the other thing with cottonwoods is they're usually gonna be water. Yeah, they're, they're gonna be something that's gonna be really close to water all the time. That's kind of their big thing.
We had a period, what, two months ago, where just the whole neighborhood was just filled with that. And, and there's no, there were none of those trees around me. They were blowing from other places anyway. They're disgusting trees.
They do that and they're really hard on people with sinus problems or allergies. But they're not on here, so, okay.
Are there any consequences to be not approved by PG tree? Like, do they do anything, or is it just a recommendation sort of thing?
There's not necessarily a consequence, but if it's under a power line, they may remove it. Or top it.
So if they do that, be good to just not have anyways, right? Like, if they're gonna ruin their tree, what's the point of trying? As it depends, right? Like, the power lines are there or not, but I don't know.
And that is independent of the kind of tree, the public utilities can manage any vegetation around their lines. So even if it was a green approved by everybody tree, if it was too close on, based on PG's own standards for their overhead lines, they could abate that problem and trim up the tree.
And turn them into flat tops.
You see that around. Okay, have council comments? Okay, I have council comments about generally the prohibited, prohibited trees. Um, including all hawthorns and I have the cottonwood comment. I have, get it more information about the three trees on page one. That P G E marks as sunscalded or drought stressed. Um, but also general consensus about removing the remaining red. Pinkish red, rose colored rose. From the list. That takes us to eight thirty. I don't know if you wanna tackle green, was my next suggested.
I understand correctly, the green ones is what everybody is approving?
Generally speaking, yes, however, there are some comments even for the green ones that do deserve council attention. And discussion. For example, on page two, you will see the. Venus dogwood. O D F not, um, remarks that there are concerns about sun exposure and drought tolerance. Um. And then. Right, where are? I'm lost. Page two, right? Number four.
Oh, there we go. Oh, okay, I was looking at the, I looked at the Cusa and didn't see the rest of, sorry.
And on page four at the top. You will see. And another example on page four at the top. The red horse chestnut, the very first line. You will see that O D F has a comment about the minimum planter width that was suggested. There are other examples throughout the document where it's noted about, um. Tree roots. And I think O D F actually used the term sidewalk busters.
Hmm.
Hmm, are the, are these trees that if we invite the individual from O D F to come speak to us, that she could address more specifically?
If council could identify. If it's all of the group, or if it's specific items, I'd like to prepare her as much as possible so that she can provide what council might be looking for. And if you need just more time to digest this list and start with the green section in September. That's also a possibility.
That would be helpful, so I'd like to have more time to study this.
I think more time to digest all of this would be appropriate.
I, I agree, I, I think, um. But I would, I would recommend that we all kinda take a look at it and make notes and have things. Um, kinda prepared, so we can make more progress, um. Yeah, because it's just, yeah, there's just, even in the green, there's conflicting, I mean. Planning commission said that it's ideal for narrow street use. And O D F says sidewalk inputs impacts in a five foot planter strip, so it's just. Completely two different opinions. So. It would be nice to kinda have notes and be able to go through these. In September, pretty quick, I, I think it'd be pretty easy to put checkmarks next to a lot of them, and then. Question marks to some of them.
So on the, excuse me, on the planning commission, what, uh, the, what was the basis of expertise from the planning commission? Of statements like that? I mean, is.
I'm blanking on the commissioner's last name, Jennifer.
Nordstrom?
Commissioner Nordstrom and Commissioner Terrell at the time, um, partnered together and brought forth. Uh, these recommendations to the commission as a whole.
And they reached out to like P G E and O D F and. To get. Information, I mean, or are they qualified tree experts, or where did that, their resources come?
I am the one who followed up with P G E and O D F to provide a. More thorough input to council.
Would you say the O D F is the, the expert on this? Like of these three opinions that we have here?
I think. Each of these three perspectives bring, um. A nuance. To the conversation. Uh, I think P G E has significant experience, obviously, under power lines. But they have provided and they do have forestry people on their team. And so some of these comments about sunscalded and drought tolerance. I think do come from a professional perspective, but may be focused towards power lines. Uh, I think the planning commissioners, they did do a very thoughtful process. Um. I know Commissioner Nordstrom and Commissioner Terrell took the research very seriously. Um, so I think they bring a perspective. Uh. And I think, and I think O D F also brings a, a very good perspective as you mentioned.
That was a very political answer, um.
I think, um, actually, I, I think Commissioner Terrell, if not her specifically, then her husband. Are, have been nursery people too, so. Some of it would've come from that. I, I'm just filling in a blank, that's all.
It, it's not meant to be a political answer, I, I think it's like. Almost every issue that comes before you or that is brought up in the community is that there's many different perspectives. Um, maybe even regarding dog leash loss. Um, and so. I think everybody brings a value to the conversation. Because they see it from a different viewpoint.
Well, I think some of these that, you know, might, may have been recommended by the planning commission, but. There may have been some objections by the O D F that, that, that it would be reasonable when this individual visits us that we specifically discuss those trees. Just to again hear that person's perspective.
Is this document gonna be shared with the planning commission, or is this purely staying with city council?
It'll be part of the official packet, and so it will be public document.
But the way I see it, I think the Oregon Department of Forestry has less bias than the other two, and therefore. Um, I would put more weight on their, their opinions, and they're looking at more high level and the state as a, as a whole. Than perhaps P G and, and the planning commission are looking, cause P G. I, I, I might be wrong, but P G doesn't operate every single city in Oregon, right? So. They might not know everything that happens in Oregon, but I imagine the. Oregon Department of Forestry might have, um, more knowledge in that department in regards to Oregon as a whole. Um, so I. Yeah, I would greatly appreciate if we could have someone from, uh, from O D F and speak with us, cause that's. That's where I would lean more towards is, uh. Whatever their, their expertise, uh. Being followed up.
I think as was suggested is, um. Reviewing the list and seeing if there are specific questions you have for O D F, so that we could just prepare her for when she comes. Uh, if there's specific information the council is looking for on a specific species or tree. Um, that might be helpful. Um, it would also provide her time right now, O D F, uh, is very difficult. To get a hold of and or schedule, they happen to be very busy during the fire season.
What I might suggest for, if you wanna. Really dig down into, um, any of the trees would be, actually a Sunset Western Garden book. Because they have usually a pretty good, um, complete description of the trees and. If they're, if it's a tree thing. Their tree section in the books, and they'll have a pretty good description of them and what. Problems or difficulties you might have with them in a, in more of a, a gardening situation. It's just another resource for counselors to look at if they wanna, if you really wanna dig, you know. Get really wonky about trees.
I'm just wondering if we're trying to make something as part of our development code to help developers make our town more attractive. And you say this, uh, forestry lady from O D F has actually been to Carlton already. Did you say that here? And, uh. I guess what I'm, do we actually need to provide our developers a list of over a hundred trees to choose from? Can't she give us a little guidance for our, uh, location here in the Lamont Valley, what would be? Um, maybe a dozen hardy trees that don't tear up the sidewalks and. Uh, something like that, as more of a guide for our developer people rather than this long list of everything you can imagine. And, you know, again, I. Think the planning commission wanted street trees to provide shade. And I think there needs to be a reasonable definition of canopy for shade on a street tree, are they going to? Grow out, you know, fifty feet on each side and make shade branches joining over, those are charming streets when you find them. Or is that a nightmare for pruning and trimming and winter storms and all like that? So if she could give us, uh, guidelines on logical street trees. And I think a dozen or twenty would be more than enough for these builders to figure out. Nurseries that have that kinda tree and go get some.
I think as council, um, uses the next month to look at the list is, yes, I think you'll narrow it down quite a bit. Um, for one. Um, two, they did provide some commentary, and I think they can further as you narrow down the list, can provide even more commentary about what might be able to be narrowed. Even further if you desire. Um, I think the planning commission was looking for, uh, as much diversity. As possible to avoid things like the Emerald Ash Bor taking out a substantial number of trees in the lower park. Um, and. I think as you digest this, you will find that. There's a lot of individual species listed here. Whereas if you're just looking at trees as a whole, there's a lot less, so like there's four magnolias listed on here. Or. Five different lilacs, and so if you think of it as just saying lilac. Then there's, you might find yourself as more of a narrowed list.
Yeah, I think it can appear daunting at first, but, but, I mean, as you go through it, there's a, there's, we could get this. Pretty fine tuned pretty quickly. I think the area that's gonna be a struggle is the area in yellow. I think, you know, looking through a lot of the green is, seems very easy to, everybody's in approval, you know, there's a couple comments in there, but. For the most part, it's only ten pages, and I am familiar with street tree, tree lists, and they are expansive for that reason, tree diversity and. Invasive species and things like that, so.
Well, and I'm, uh, concerned that if these are the street trees providing shade, that they not be. Maybe lilacs that are more like a bush, or service berry that's more like a bush. So. I think we should define, my street tree has a trunk and some width of shade.
I think those are valuable discussion points as council continues on this.
Also, is fire resistance, um, considered with these trees as well?
Fire resistance isn't necessarily a specific column. What you could look for as you're digesting this is trees that would have more difficulty, uh, surviving a drought. Or as the mayor pointed out, if you look into some of these other, the sunset manuals, they will point out, I shouldn't say manuals, the. Books, um, they will note. Uh, certain trees that are highly flammable. Um, actually, what the species I'm thinking of right now isn't even a tree, it's a grass, but, an ornamental grass. But, that, that is something that, as you digest the list, you could look for.
Yeah, I mean. As an example, the Oakland Hills fire. Just exploded because of the eucalyptus trees. They're oil based, they just, you know.
And that could be when you narrow it down, is that then O D F comes in and you ask, are any of these that we narrowed down to? Are they, are some of them more fire resistant than others? Are, are they more applicable for narrow planting strips than others? Are they more drought tolerant as we're seeing hotter and drier summers? And you could, so once you start whittling it down, then you could whittle it down even further if that's what you desire to do.
The other thing, as you're looking through, you might wanna watch too is root growth. Because they're gonna be in sidewalks.
I, I do think that, I would imagine that, I mean, we've seen comments about narrow planting strips and sidewalks, so. I, I feel like each group probably looked at that, and as well as, you know, we can clarify with O D F, but. Part of the Department of Forestry is fire protection, so I would assume that falls into her realm of. Thought and training on selecting trees as well, so, but we can definitely follow up on it. I think, again, I don't think we need to beat up the list. I think it's, the information's all in front of us, we just need to kinda go through it.
Okay, do we have consensus then, what we're doing? Are we ready to end this meeting? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Or is there anything else?
I made a motion to adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Alright.
Motion carries. But actually, I've had one more thing. What if, yeah, there was some.